November meeting of the Town and Ulster Planning Board to order. And I guess we can stand and pledge to the pledge of allegiance to a flag of your choice. With allegiance to the flag, the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Gabby, do you want to do a roll call, please?
Ms. Hayner?
Yes.
Mr. Alquist. Mr. Alquist, you have to unmute. Mr. Decker? Mr. Furman? Mr. Moore? Ms. Mr. Moore, you're also muted. You have to mute yourself. Mr. Strabopoulos?
Here.
Chairman Mulligan?
Here.
And I see Mr. Moore.
Yeah, I think you said, yes. Okay. Approval of the minutes from October. I know Gabby, you've sent the revised minutes with some corrections that everyone have a chance to review the the corrected minutes.
I hope they be approved.
Okay, so second.
I'll second Andrew.
And your second, alright, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Mr. Decker, Mr. Alquist. Are you aye?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, minister approved. First item of business, a public hearing for Vincent Argantini, major subdivision. First, would just Mike, if you would just like to do an overview of what you're proposing before we open the preliminary public hearing.
Okay, sure. Again, good evening, everybody in public. I'm Mike Vitary, licensed surveyor. I'm proposing a four lot subdivision for the Argentinians. Four lots, all consisting of around thirteen thousand square feet. Since last month, we have made some changes. The road is entirely now encompassed by lot four. All of the utilities will be within the road. And the Argentinians have now hired our previous town attorney, Andy Zwieben, to not only represent them, but help put together a maintenance agreement, which has been forwarded to Jason and Gabby. And from my understanding, this particular maintenance agreement has just as much protection in it for the town as it does for the homeowners and the developer. Jason has reviewed this and has got back to us via email. So those are basically our changes. Those were the things that were asked of us last month. One was to put the road within one of the lots. We chose to put it within lot four as it had the most frontage along lot four. We did confirm that all the utilities will be within the road. And the road will be encompassed with a maintenance agreement, which has already been prepared. With that being said, we are moving forward here and we will let you guys speak.
Okay. Let's go ahead and open the preliminary public hearing. If I could have a motion to open the hearing.
I make that motion.
Okay, Anna, second.
Alquist, second.
Alquist, Mr. Alquist. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Public hearing is open. Do we have any comments from the public? Okay, hearing none, and I have not received any written correspondence regarding it. Could I have a motion to close the preliminary public hearing?
I'll make that motion through.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, the public hearing is now closed. And we had no comments from the public. Any comments from the board members? It seems to be the road layout is probably the most primary concern of the board and just in terms of its layout. And I know there was an issue John Rose brought up about water mains. Warren, can you address that?
What was the question now?
There was an issue brought up by John Rose from the Water Department about water mains being within the road.
I wasn't aware of that, but if you'd like to brief me on what was said, I would surely be able to respond.
I'll let Warren do that.
So I had a conversation with John this morning. I also had a conversation with Supervisor Quigley. In the town code, it states that private water lines are not allowed to cross over other lots. Now, there is a stipulation in here that there is an exception, that the regulation can receive approval from the town board to allow it to come, because now that we moved the road onto a private lot, the utilities for three of them will be passing across this lot. John does not have an issue with it, and the supervisor does not probably modify the road maintenance agreement to include the utilities. So that if they're in the event, if we have three water lines, in the event one of them is damaged, then it's not the owner of the road, it's somebody else. They have the right to go in and repair their water.
Okay, so from, Warren, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you from my, from my, from my, from my understanding, the utilities are in the maintenance agreement already, all of them, including the electric.
Okay, I apologize. I haven't been in my office except for the last thirty minutes, so I didn't get a chance to read the agreement.
No, I understand totally.
Now, there was one request that before we get to the final public hearing, that John Rose and Vinny Maggiore would like to see your proposed layout of the utilities. I have not had a chance to talk to Vinny about running a common sewer up. John was more of the mindset to have three individual three-quarter inch lines rather than one main, in that if there's a problem in the main, you take out three structures.
I mean, that works for us. It is such a short run. I believe that whatever the town would require with, you know, within in terms of the utilities within the road, I don't think it would be an issue, because the amount of material to build is going to be menial, as the length of the road is menial.
Okay, so as soon as we can get something that I can present to both of those departments, we'll get them. Mike, now, Mike, John said he'd meet you there if you wanted.
That's fine by me. I have no problem meeting him.
Okay, well, I know you're busy, busier than the rest of us.
That's not a problem.
But, so if you want, I can arrange that. I will try to talk to Vinny on Thursday and see what, if he wants to get involved, or if he'll just go with a plan.
Okay, and in the meantime, I will touch base with Vinny Argantini, as he is not only the developer, but will obviously be building this, and we'll come up with a plan. I don't, I think that's fine. Moving forward with that being the idea, and yeah, sure, I will set up a meeting. I have no problem meeting everybody, and I'm sure even Mr. Argantini would meet us to get all this straightened out. So if that's what it takes to move forward, then those are the steps we're going to take.
Alright, then I'll, I'll try to coordinate with you, Vinny Argantini, Vinny Maggiore, and John Rose, and I might as well show up, because ultimately I'll be involved. So we'll figure something out.
Great, thank you.
Is the road still terminated with the cul-de-sac?
It is with a hammerhead, correct.
Going hammerhead, okay.
Is, are the board members satisfied with the road layout and the the way it's assigned to one lot? Have you had a chance to read the road maintenance agreement?
I'm good with it.
Okay.
Yes, I read it. It's good.
Okay. Okay. Let's see. So David, any comments? I believe our next step would be to set up the final public hearing.
Okay, that discussion covered all the previous comments. So when you're ready, you can set the final hearing. I suppose, and making sure that the water sewer departments get a chance to review.
Okay. So Warren, do you think that'll happen before next month's meeting, I would assume?
Gary, I'll make sure it happens. I'll follow up.
Yeah, yeah. Well, they're available. I'll make myself available.
Yeah, okay, alright, good. So if I could have a motion to set the final public hearing for next month's meeting?
I'll make the motion, Alquist.
Alquist, second.
I'll second that.
Okay, Anna, second. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, motion is carried. We'll have the second public hearing next month.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions before we let Mr. Vitary go?
I don't think he's going far.
Yeah, I'm sticking around for a little bit there.
Yeah, I know, yeah. Sorry, yeah, you're next.
But the next one's going to be a little bit shorter, I believe.
Okay, let's go right ahead into Mr. Manuel's project.
Alright, so this is just an update. We, as you guys know, we're waiting on the comments from the county planning board. But in the meantime, just an update, we have supplied a photometric plan to the town, which was asked in the last meeting. That was sent over earlier this week. We have also added, just on some smaller notes, silt fence around the construction area has been added to the plan. We added the eight-one-one dig safe note, and we also added a note for bumper stops at each proposed new parking stall. And there is a revised note on the map, which if you don't mind if I screen share, can I screen share for a second, guys? Alright, let me just get you here. Where am I? So Emmanuel revised right here. Can you guys see this right now?
Well, I just see the PDF.
Yeah, alright, so let me, hold on. Okay, is that screen sharing currently?
Yes.
Alright, so you will see I added the note right above where it says area two point nine three seven acres. There's a note in there that a bump stop has to be installed at every proposed parking spot. The dig safe note up top and the silt fence detail and the silt fencing, fencing added along the rear for construction. Those were the changes we made. Other than that, we're waiting to hear back from the county, and this is basically just an update.
I can see your, the PDF, but I don't think it's launched yet, or at least I haven't seen it on my device. I don't know if everybody else can, but.
Yeah, it's telling me my screen sharing is paused for some resume share.
I only see the, yeah, so I see is the screenshot.
Alright, so maybe it's not.
We trust you.
Alright, so either way, I mean, I can resubmit a PDF to send to everybody from, to Gabby, that's no problem. But either way, just so you know, those are the changes. We are adding the bump stops, we are adding the silt fencing, the dig safe note, and at this point in time, we're just waiting for comments from the county planning board.
That's good.
David, any comments?
No, I think that covers it. There probably be no surprises from the county since they've seen this in different iterations before.
Right, okay.
But your timing is, it'll all happen in the early part of December then, I guess.
They told us the first week.
Right. So you want, Michael, you probably want to get on for that December meeting?
Yeah, we're going to try and stick on for December if possible. We're hoping that we'll have the review notes back before the tenth.
We should have the notes back by then.
Yeah, but for Gary and the board, there's, there'll be it's unlikely there'll be any surprises from the county.
Yeah.
And Dave, if we don't make it on for, if for some reason we don't get the comments back, Gabby and I will make sure that we don't waste your time with being on the agenda, but I believe we will be. You know, we will have the results back.
Yeah, it should be good.
Okay. Any other comments from the board?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Alright, thank you.
Last item of business is new business. Albany Seven LLC Site Plan Amendment. And I see Dino's away from his computer.
So while, while we're waiting for him.
This is Dave. I got the plan. I mean, the site plan. Want me to put it up?
Yes, thanks.
Okay, it'll take me a moment. I got a different screen.
Okay, Dino, just so you know, you're away from your desk, we just, we just opened new business with your site plan.
Very good. I'm here, thank you.
And David is putting up this site plan.
Uh-oh, what happened?
Is he trying to?
Oh.
Someone's TV is very loud.
Yeah.
You see it, Gary?
I'm seeing just, I'm seeing just the, like, the very left side of the data table. I can't see.
Oh.
It's like, it's like.
Extremely zoomed in version.
Yeah, it's too large.
Let me regroup, but I think he's trying to get it up too.
Alright. That's better. Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, now I can see, we can see it.
Excuse me, guys. You want to, can we let Stero on?
Yeah, is he there?
Oh, yes. You want me to get off?
He's here, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, because he, you can walk your way through it.
Gabby, continue on mute, Stero.
Um, it doesn't look like it's connected to audio. Unless he's the nine-one-four number.
He's a CIA drafter, eh?
That's that's what I assume, but I don't see any audio connected to it. You may need to turn it on or connect it.
Do we have him now?
Nothing yet.
Nothing yet.
Hello?
There he is.
Hello, hello.
Hello, we got him.
He was on the cell phone. Okay, there he is.
There we go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, if you let me share my screen, I'll bring up the drawing and explain everything.
I'll get out, Gary.
Okay.
Okay, I'm out.
Go ahead, Stero.
Alright, okay. Can you see this?
Ah, yeah.
Can you see my screen?
Not yet.
How about that? Well, it's up on my screen. Can you see my screen?
No.
I got the site plan up on my screen, so I don't know how to how you can share that.
On the bottom, there's an option that says share screen.
Hmm, yeah, okay. Can you see it now?
It's starting.
There it is. That's good.
You can see it?
Yes.
Yes.
Beautiful. Okay, okay, so this is the site plan. And we'll start with the site plan. I'm going to zoom in a little bit. So here is the lot line that's going to be removed. This is the existing building in the back. This is the footprint of the existing restaurant that's proposed to be demolished and removed. And this is the footprint of the laundromats. The basic rectangle is sixteen, sixty feet by one hundred feet. This appendage on the back is a single-story apartment, which I'll show you in a second. And this little bump out here is the stairwell that goes up to the second floor. And that is twenty-four feet. Twenty-four feet from the front property line to the front of this stairwell. So now I'm going to go to the building plan and show you where that is. So here's this little bump out of the stairwell, and to the face of this stairwell is twenty-four feet. To the face of this laundromat is twenty-nine feet, because there's a five, this is a five-foot wide projection right here. So so this is the first floor of the laundromat. This is the
Stero, we lost your audio.
Yeah, you went on mute by accident.
Right.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, go ahead.
There you go.
Nope, not anymore.
We lost you again.
Hello?
You're back.
How are you back today?
There you are.
My phone keeps on muting me for, muting me for some reason. I don't know why. Okay, so this is the first floor. This is the first floor apartment. This is the second floor with the eight units, and here's that front stairwell that's closest to Ulster Avenue. This is a foundation plan. This is the front of it, or calling it the front, which faces the parking lot. These are the entrance doors into the laundromat. This is the side that faces Ulster Avenue, and this right here is the stairwell. That's twenty-four feet from the highway. The rest of this main body of the building is twenty-nine feet from the highway. This is the side that's furthest away from the highway, and this is the back of the building. So I'm going to go back to the site plan. So here's the front of the laundromat building. Here's the highway. And here is that question of the twenty-four foot setback right here. So basically, we're only, it's only part of this building that's twenty-four feet back. The main two-story structure is about twenty-nine feet back from the highway. The curb cut is here, and the circulation comes around the existing building and back out again. We've got clearance. Clearance from this corner to the corner of the first floor apartment, twenty-seven feet, twenty-four feet to the hash mark, and about twenty-seven feet to where this parking delineation is. There's a total of sixty parking spaces on the site, which is shows up in this table here. Sixty-two parking spaces total. So the, the request is for the variance, the area variance of the twenty-four feet and the use variance for the, for the nine apartments. And I saw the comments from the reviewer pretty much explains everything that I've just explained. So I can, you know, entertain questions, or if Dino wants to talk more about it, or if the board wants to talk about it, we're welcome. We'll talk about it.
Okay.
Dino, you'll just have to mute yourself if you want to chime in.
Do you want me to mute myself?
No, she said, she was speaking to Dino.
She's talking to me, continue, to continue. But is there any questions from you guys?
So, you know, there's a few things going on here, obviously, with this project. Two issues before the ZBA. The ZBA has asked the planning board to chime in, so to speak, on our view of the, the front issue with the setback not being thirty feet, but being twenty-four to the, to the proposed stairwell, and then twenty-nine to the rest of the building, as well as the the variance for the apartments. So my concern, I guess, is it's, to me, usually the ZBA gives us their opinion, and, and then we proceed on with the site plan once once the applicant knows that they are going to get the variances. To me, we're sort of doing this a little bit backwards, but not
Exactly, exactly. And, and I went to them, I went to them twice about it, and they told, they recommended that I come to the planning board, and you know, I thought I was doing the right thing, and, and Mr. Tutt was with all these meetings, zoning, and he's, even he said he wants to make sure it gets the variance before we go through. And they recommended that I go to you guys for the planning for it first. And I don't know why they did that. I guess they want, for some reason, they want your blessing on this, and then I guess we're going to go back to them, and then they're going to vote, apparently.
Yeah, so it's, it's important for us now to, to give, you know, the proper comments in our view of this project. You know, there are apartments in highway commercial zone. We just have to decide, in our view, is it appropriate to the neighborhood, what's, what's existing? What's, what's existing? Um, there is a shortage of apartments in the city and the town. Uh, so uh, this, this is a good reuse of this building, in my opinion.
Thank you.
The design is, is appropriate for what's being proposed, so, but I need, I need feedback from the other board members.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I could, um, just wanna explain what the zoning board, um, what their position was on this.
Okay.
I, I think both processes, site plan and the variance uh application should be, should go, go forward simultaneously. Obviously, one is contingent on the other, but the zoning board had concerns about um, you know, what kind of area variances are required here? What kind of um, if a use variance is necessary? And they wanted the planning board to take a look at the site plan. And if this, if the planning board is, is generally happy with the site plan, maybe with some minor modifications, I think then the zoning board will be more likely to be educated and be able to make a decision as to uh whether the variances are, are, whether, whether they should be granted.
Alright, correct, thanks.
I have something to add.
Go ahead, Warren.
So, two of the concerns of um, of the zoning board, in addition to the apartments, was one of their major concerns was by moving closer to the road, were we gonna have decent sightlines? Um, that came up more than once when the people were trying to exit, because now you're moving the building closer. Well, twenty, twenty-four feet from the road edge is uh more than adequate, as long as all those plantings that are depicted there do not grow up to, to block the sightline. So they want rea- reaffirmation of that. They also wanted to confirm that there was gonna be enough parking, which it seems that um, Stero has addressed in his uh parking layout and his loading standards. That was pretty much what the zoning board, like Jason said, the zoning board wanted confirmation that, that this would be, you know, approved by the planning board as proposed.
Right.
The only other thing I have to add is that before before the planning board were to approve this, um, we'd still need um utilities on it, so that it could go to, because that was brought up to me today also about um water and sewer. Um, they haven't seen any proposals for it. And we'd like to have that, you know, on the plan. That's approved, not as um, a condition of approval. Make sense?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I just, I just found that out today, I'll work on that this week.
Thank you. I don't want any last-minute surprises, neither do you.
Yeah, don't misunderstand me, I'm not being critical of, of the ZBA, but th- this is the first time in my eleven years on the board that, that uh a project has come to us uh in this way. So um, it's important that we do it right, and as, as Jason and our planning consultant said, this needs to be a coordinated review uh among uh our planning board, the ZBA and the town board, so uh, you know, I wanna make sure we do this right. And uh, give the ZBA the guidance that they're looking for, so uh, let's address the, the, the front setback issue, what, what is the board's feeling about this uh being twenty-four feet, as long as there's plantings uh to dress up the front of the area? Any other concerns? Site, this, site distance being another one, of course.
Uh, I am, this is Andrew, I'm, I'm comfortable with the twenty-four, uh, it seems like the majority of the building or a good portion of it's twenty-nine back. And like Warren pointed out, as long as the, the planting stay low for the sightlines, I, I'm pretty good with the setback in the front a- as proposed.
Okay, thank you.
My only concern, Homquist here, is that the uh, that stairwell going up to the second floor provides a lot of bulk view very close to Ulster Avenue. There, there's not a lot of detail there, and it just, it looks like it ought to be the rear end of the building rather than the front end. That's what you're going to
Uh, I can work on, I can work on uh, you know, some architectural treatments to change that a little bit, we'll see what we can do.
Yeah, some detail has to be there. And then
Yeah, I
then there's, there's spacing, there, I believe there is a sidewalk in there, in there now. So you'll, you'll match up with the existing sidewalk?
Uh, this was taken from the surveyor's survey, and there weren't no, oh, just in sidewalk, right here, yeah. So what we'll do is we'll, we'll run from here and connect to that sidewalk. And where a person could walk down the sidewalk and come in to the complex.
Okay.
Okay.
So, as I drive by the site, um, and look at site distance pulling out of the this area, this, this sign, the, the bottom portion of the sign is, is not there now. Um my concern is, if there is a sign there, is that gonna block site distance in this direction on Ulster Avenue when you're trying to pull out?
Well, currently, currently at the moment, I believe back in the day, that, that sign had three signs, like, for some reason, because there's three businesses, but for me I don't need that, there's only gonna be two businesses, which I own them both, it's Shane's Ice Cream, and there, there'll be the Clean and Go Express. So there will be two signs, and I'll even, I could raise that a little bit to give us more sight. And I w- I won't have a sign there, we can just put two there. So, I'll, I'll make that as great as I can for everybody, cuz I wholeheartedly agree. Visuals and everything.
The challenge for us now i- i- is we have the nine W corridor enhancement plan, which we've required monument signs for other applicants uh along the corridor. And a monument sign, we're gonna have to think about that. At worst, I think.
What if we move the monument sign north to the other planter? Since we're farther south for the exit.
Up this way?
Yeah, I agree, Warren.
We move it up towards
Up here?
On of the
Here, Warren?
Up in there, or, or maybe even in the south, it, somewhere in that planter? Because now you're pulling out on the bottom where it says thirty-foot front. You'll have that greater sightline of about so sixty feet before that sign interferes. That's just a thought.
Well, it's a good idea. That will work.
I agree with that.
We'll move it up in this area?
Yes.
Someplace? Okay.
Yeah, that'd be, that would be more desirable, I think.
Okay.
Alright. Alright, um
I have one more question, I'm sorry. So the back of the building coming from north, what does it look like? I, I can't find the um drawings on my pho- on my email.
I'll show you.
West elevation.
It's this one.
Okay.
This is the rear, this is if you were traveling
The rear of the building, right?
South of nine W. That's what you'd see.
Yeah, I do
You're not, you're not gonna see a lot of that, cuz it forest.
I do think that the, the front, like the part facing Ulster Avenue does need to bump it up a little bit, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, we'll do, we'll try and do something there, fix it up, make it look more appealing.
Maybe add a window.
That's what I was thinking, a window or something.
That's a great idea. That's good, good light.
Maybe I could take, maybe we can take this roof and extend it around possibly, and break this into two halves, add a window up here, maybe a window down here. We'll do something.
Yeah, that's
Yeah, make it look more appealing, so it doesn't look like the back of a building.
Right.
The other comment I make is the uh, it's a very tight site. And if we get a foot of snow, where are you going to put the snow?
We're going to remove this though.
So okay, you're gonna remove it completely?
Well, that, well, you can, obviously, depending on the load, a- any, anybody gets big loads of snow, you're gonna remove, but more likely, it's probably getting pushed back, I assume, to these back corners back here that are, are quite large, and at that point, the, depending on the guys and the situation we have, they'll be instructed to remove it. While the skidsters there and remove it during on call.
Is the fifty parking spaces you have the maximum to meet the town code? Or is that the number of sites that you just managed to fit on the area?
No, we met the requirement.
We have sixty-two spaces.
One space per two washers, that we equated to thirty-two, the apartments were two and a half spaces per dwelling unit, that equated to twenty-two and a half. And for the manufacturing is one per five hundred square feet, which equated to seven point two, which is a total of sixty-two. And we have fifty-nine car spaces, three handicapped, and that makes a total of sixty-two. So we met it ex- exactly to the number. So there's no wiggle room? No.
So let's, let's uh now take a look at the, at the use variance for the apartments. As David noted in his, in his planning uh project review notes, um the board should look at uh whether or not the requested variances will alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Uh, i.e. the apartments. And whether or not the requested variances are substantial or already applied to a substantial portion of the neighborhood. So, as you look at the, the businesses along that, that corridor um, it's mostly just service businesses, uh, no apartments that I can think of, although right on the other side the next street over is all residential. So how does the board feel about, is this going to alter the character of this neighborhood by allowing apartments on the site?
Uh, be- being that it's mixed use, I think, I'm o- I'm okay with it, um, as far as not altering the, the neighborhood. Um, if it's solely apartment buildings that, you know, I'd have to pause a little bit longer that, and think about that, but
Okay.
How many um, how many uh handicap accessible apartment, is it just the one on the first floor?
Correct.
Is that handicap accessible?
Yes, exactly.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I'm good with it being the need of apartments and, and uh, it's mixed used. I, I think it works, and it, it was um previously apartment also, wasn't it, if I remember correctly?
Correct, there's two actually, there's two above it right now, and, and I, and according to zoning as well, both buildings are allowed. Two apartments, so two apartments above the laundromat, and two apartments above the back building in, in according to zoning. So I'm not putting apartments in the back building, so I'm asking to get the apartments in the front building.
Are the apartments that are there now currently occupied?
Uh, no, no, I got them out of there, they're evicted out, and uh, I'm, I'm, I'm ready to take the building down. So I didn't want, I don't want anybody living there. But I, I can easily rent them, I had them rented, but, yeah. There's a big demand for rentals right now.
So, so you need two and a half spots per, they look like a, the majority one bedrooms, I, I, I think we're good with the parking then, because typically, you're not gonna have two, two and a half cars per one bedroom.
Exactly, that was my thinking, exactly.
Yeah, I, I feel better about that too, so, right.
And that falls back on Mr. Hom- Homquist has a very valid point, he specified about snow, that is a valid point, when you get a foot of snow, what do you, what do you do with it? But like you said, zoning asks for two and a half spaces per unit, and that's why we geared them down to one, cuz you have one bedroom, you don't have two, three cars on the two bedroom, you don't have a family living there with their, their sixteen-year-old daughter or whatever coming with cars. It's gonna be minimal, we will have some space for snow, and if not, well, what we, I'll, I'll remove it. You know, the businesses are, I own them all, so it's, it's top priority to keep the flow, as well as if there's a fire, fire trucks need to get around to address an issue. So, and I, I got the blessing from the fire chief as well, so uh, with, with the plan and everything as well, so.
So they can make the, the truck between the back building and the corner of the apartment?
Yes, sir. Way he described it, he goes, his truck could pull in there, the way they kept their reach goes well beyond that building, is what he told me, he said, there was no, no problem whatsoever, we're fighting that, that, that topic.
Yeah, you show almost thirty feet there, twenty, twenty-seven?
It's seven feet, seven inches.
Yeah.
And you got thirty feet in the back, right, thirty point nine?
Oh, there is a, there is a, uh, how many accessible parking spaces do we provide, one or two?
We have uh one here and two here, there's a total of three.
Okay, cuz if you'll notice on the um, the west side of the building, you have two loading zones for one, for one spot?
Yeah.
You only need one, so now you picked up another parking space.
Yeah, we could do that.
And I are at sixty-three, there you go, Frank, I got you one more parking space.
You can't put
Well done, Warren, well done.
Um, the only other detail I noticed is that we do have the um, for lot delineation, the, the space delineation, we do do the closed-end loop.
Can you explain that, Warren, with it? Oh, you mean like a double line with a
Yeah, double line with a closed end.
Okay.
That's our, that's our new parking standard.
Okay.
And the spaces are still nine feet. So, it's, it's nine feet to the center of the two lines.
So we're not losing any space, we're just
You're not losing any space, it's just, it's a delineation, it's supposed to get the people to park in the center of the space, rather than hug one side of the other.
Okay, we can change that.
That's just, just so we're aware.
Do you even have an enclosure for the dumpster?
We could put an enclosure there.
Yeah, there'll have to be one.
Okay.
Alright, so
That'll, that dumpster will be shared between the uh ice cream manufacturing, as well as all the apartments.
Yeah, sir.
And the laundromat.
At least it's not a restaurant dumpster.
Say again?
That at least it's not a restaurant dumpster, I don't wanna go through King's Valley Diner again.
Oh, my God. Oh, my God. Poor Teddy, he, he's my neighbor, what a nightmare.
Yeah. So I'm not, I, I, I guess uh, as a board, we're satisfied with the uh, this project as far as recommending to the ZBA to grant both variances.
Thank you, thank you all.
Uh, am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, I, I feel that way.
Alright. Um, just looking through notes, we have a lot line deletion to also um adjustment, lot line adjustment. So David, um at some point, what, what would you recommend that we uh, we handle at next month's meeting?
Well, you've got uh
Utilities while.
Okay, sorry, Warren. Go ahead.
That wasn't me.
Oh, sorry. Um, so you've got a site plan application, which is a final approval by the town board. On recommendation from the planning board, you have a lot line adjustment and the two variances that are the bundle, did I, I think I got that right? Um, so the site plan and the use variance are subject to seeker and referable to the county. The other two applications, the area variance and the lot line adjustment are not.
Cool.
So you, the, I mean, ideally for everybody's ease and coordination and simplicity, someone would start those two processes. The referral to the county and the seeker for the group, for the, for the two of the four applications that need it. I'll defer to Jason on how you want, we should handle this, but I mean, the, the board tonight could may, you could, you've made a recommendation about the variances, I assume you can just communicate that pretty simply, right? They, um, even with the draft meeting minutes. Um, but someone's gotta start seeker and get the referral to the county. I don't know, Gary, if you want to have the planning board do that.
Yeah, I would say, yeah. I'm just. Just thinking how to word that.
Of course, with the assumption particularly for the county referral on the site plan, that all the things that, uh, were just raised and quote, including Warren's points, uh, get reflected on that before it gets to the county.
I think the planning board can refer this to the town board with a recommendation that the town board sent it to the county. And then the zoning board can do the same thing or at their next zoning board meeting, they can refer this to the county directly.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, the county's going to want to see, uh, any lighting plans, landscaping, utilities that Warren, uh, mentioned. Would, would they want to see the lot line deletion prior to them going to the county?
Probably easier for the county if we took the lot line up before.
I would think. Right? Okay.
Because without it, Gary, it raises other variance needs.
Yes. Right. So.
You want me to, you want me to remove that dash line from my drawing? Is that what you're saying?
Uh, well, no, you could just include, uh.
I'm saying.
It would just be part of the documentation provided. The, the, the plat you sent in, uh, yesterday or whatever.
The letter?
I, I thought you had a, didn't you send a?
You sent in a letter yesterday to Gabrielle.
Yes. The, the board will need a plat too that shows that line removed.
The line, the line removal by, go ahead, sir.
That should come from the surveyor, correct?
Uh, I think architect, surveyor or engineer can do it in New York.
Yeah, the ser, the surveyor, I believe, sent that in, uh, to Gabby. I think we have that. I thought you guys might have had that. I said it to her yesterday.
We do, yes.
Yes, I sent it out.
I actually, I actually had him do that in January and then COVID hit. And I don't think he just processed it because, uh, all the county buildings were, were closed at the time. And then I called in the back yesterday when Gabby brought it to my attention and I emailed it right over to her.
Well, we need a resolution to, uh, to approve that lot line.
Okay.
Adjustment.
Okay. We'll have the lot line adjustment and then we need the county referral for the next meeting executed. And we'll have the utility layout, which I talked to, uh, I called Vincent McGory today, but he was supposed to call me back. And I talked to Mr. Rose from the water department as well to see what line that he wanted to come in their proposal. I think it's a three-quarter, but I, I expect the two inch for the, uh, for the sprinkler systems as well as the apartments and the laundromat.
Oh, there'll be a larger line in three-quarter because if the sprinkler, you're going to be either four or six.
Absolutely. I think a minimum two-inch line, right?
Um, if you're sprinkling the whole building, I don't think a two will do it. Um, you might re, you might reach out to your engineer or, um, or a fire sprinkler.
I have my, I sent it to my engineer today, so he's going to size up the water line requirement and the sewer line requirement.
Excellent.
I have a quick question. Um, I'm looking at, uh, on the internet on the satellite view of this. And it looks like right now cars can come in from Albany Avenue on both sides of that, uh, where the existing sign is. Is that true?
Yes.
Okay. So now the building is going to be made bigger. So yeah, right where the cursor is right now, that entrance right there, is that going to be left as like a dummy entrance? Or is that going to be made so somebody driving down the road wouldn't make a mistake and like accidentally turn into that? You know what I mean? Like right now, it opens up to the road. It's not going to stay there, right?
There would have to be a redo on all the curving. Yeah, well.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm wondering. Like it won't be left just open.
No, we probably should close that off.
Yeah.
That will come from DOT.
So Warren, do they have to get a?
They got their highway.
So they gotta get a permit, permit to close it?
Well, yeah, they'll, they'll, they'll need a permit, but our proposal will go to county. County will, you know, yea or nay about singular entrance. Um, and when we come up with singular entrance, then yeah, you want to affect that road, you'll need a DOT. I think it's a thirty-three permit to, to close the cur, you know, to put a curb back in.
Right.
But that's, that's down the road.
Do you think county might request, require an in and an out? Take this out?
Take the island out?
Yeah.
That's a good possibility because they're very keen on, you know, one way in, one way out.
Okay.
And we move the sign, so it's feasible.
We have a utility pole right here. A utility pole here. I would think that, you know, we could have a wide enough curb opening from here to down here to have this in and out at one curb opening. I think that might be, you know, more than enough control rather than have one way in and one way out with a separation in the middle. I think, uh, I really don't think that's necessary on this site, to be honest with you. What DOT has done with a lot of sites that we've had on Ulster Avenue is a right in and a right out. No left turns across Ulster Avenue. Well, this would get referred to the county DOT anyway, correct? State DOT. State DOT. So we'll see what their comments is.
Yeah.
All right. So we'll have to wait to hear from their comments. Warren?
Yes.
You look like you're going to say something.
No.
Okay. All right.
Well, you've, so Gary, it's Dave again. You got timing. If, if, Ciro, if you can do all this, we have to get it to the town board soon to get it on a December county planning board meeting.
Yeah.
Next Thursday is their meeting.
Next Thursday is their meeting?
The town board meets next Thursday, right?
And you want me to get this done by next?
Well, this needs to be done to submit it to county
Yeah.
by the end of this month. But we don't submit this to the town board.
Right.
There's no problem getting this all revised by the end of the month, but not by Thursday. That's for sure.
Okay. Yeah.
So now when I get all these revisions done, do I submit them back to the town of Ulster, back to, to, to this planning board and you distribute from there? Is the, the lead agency is, does the distribution, correct? To this, to the.
Well, Gabby will do that for you, right?
Yeah. Okay.
But you're going to, so the, the sequence is if the, if this board, planning board approves of which appears they're headed that way to recommend that the town board refer it to the county, the town board meets next week. So they will approve it going to the county for comment, but the county will need the documentation by the end of the month.
Well, that I can do. If the board can look at this drawing and make their referral, by the end of the month, I can have the revisions done. And I'll send it into Gabby and she can give it to the, to the county planning board.
Right, right. So Gary, Warren and I and Gabby could check all that to make sure it's what the board was looking for.
Okay.
And that's the county referral, which means you'll presumably get comments back, uh, just before your December meeting.
Okay. All right. And also we need to take care of the lot line, uh, deletion. Can we do that by resolution this evening?
I'll call, I'll call, I'll call Spencer tomorrow. He'll call the county and get it, and get it filed, so it'll be official.
Uh, Gary, it's Dave again. You might, you might just want to do it when you get the county comments back and do it.
Okay.
With the December recommendation of the town board for approval.
All right.
Um, you've got so you have a potential resolution tonight to recommend to the town board that they, uh, take lead agency under seeker and refer the site plan application to the county planning board.
Okay, before we do that, any other comments or questions? Okay, could I have a resolution to refer, uh, to, um, refer this to the town board to be the lead agency for seeker and also to refer the application to the Ulster County Planning Board when it's complete?
I'll make them. I'll say, Andrew.
Discussion. So Ciro, you, you understand that you, you can get this done by next Thursday's town board meeting?
Yeah. I understand that. I said, you understand that and I'll do my best to get it done.
Yeah, otherwise, I mean, it just adds a month probably to the process. That's all. It's not.
I'll get it done. We'll get it done.
Okay. All right, um, all those a favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Close. Okay, the most is Gary. Anything else, uh, for this project that you can see that I haven't missed?
Sorry.
Go ahead.
So, uh, Gary, just, uh, how do you want to communicate, uh, uh, to the zoning board? Have Gabby send the draft minutes or?
Yeah.
Do a memo?
Let's do a memo and, and also a copy of the draft minutes.
Okay.
Are you going to wait before the town board sees it to, uh, until the town board sees it for the lot line deletion?
Well, on David's recommendation, we were going to wait until we heard from the county before we do that. If I understood correctly.
Correct. And you could do it when you do the site plan recommended, recommendation to the town board, which is looking like your December meeting.
Okay. Frank, how, do you think that would be a problem with the county?
If, if it's shown on there that it's going to be deleted, I, there won't be a problem with them.
Okay. All right.
Uh, Ciro, can you get a, uh, map that shows the site plan plus the, the lot line to be removed?
Well, it's shown right here. This dash line is the lot line. And I've got a note that says existing property line to be removed. I can, if that's suffice.
Maybe just want to punch it up a little for.
Okay. All right.
Come in graphically punch it up, I mean.
Yeah, right.
Isn't county going to want a clean map to file?
Not at the.
Ultimately, yeah. You're going to need a separate plat to file for the, for the lot line adjustment.
The surveyor will move the lot line, come up with a new deed description for the total lot, and then it would still have to be filed with the county. For it to become official.
Yep, okay.
We just want to avoid the county planning board, uh, uh, being fully aware that that lot's going to be, the lots are going to be combined. Otherwise it could raise other issues.
I'll make it nice and heavy.
I'll, I'll, Spencer file it tomorrow.
That's good for me, Gary.
Okay, um, any other comments of this, uh, this particular project had, had some other, um, complexities, given that the, uh, the use and area variance, uh, issues, so, uh, as I said before, I just want to make sure we, we do everything right. Uh, any other questions?
When it goes to the county, they're going to be looking for some definition of landscaping. Yeah, I'll do a separate landscaping plan with us, uh, plant schedule and some notes. We'll do a separate utility plan, a separate landscaping plan and a lighting plan.
So.
Now the, uh, power line runs along the, uh, the front of that building. Say again? If I recall, the power lines run across the front of that building. Where are they on? On the other side of Ulster Avenue. They're right here on this picture. They cross Ulster Avenue to this front utility pole. And then they go to the building. Uh, Dino, would we be going underground with new electric service?
And I, I got a Central Hudson. I am, I already have my J number with them. They're going to come out and check it out. I would like to go on the ground in a perfect world if they let me.
But.
They do elsewhere.
You'll have, you do, you have to consider there's, those power lines are probably twenty-five to thirty feet overhead.
Yeah. That's exactly right.
Well, I think these ones that come across Ulster Avenue to this pole would stay. And from this pole, we would come down and into the building, right?
Right.
That's typically how they would do it. So the ones that cross Ulster Avenue right here, they would probably stay. We'd come down and underground from there.
The only thing will be if that's, if that's a primary coming across Ulster Avenue, that's a non-issue. Uh, meaning that they put a transformer, pad-mounted transformer or pole-mounted. If it's secondary, if the transformer's on the other side of the street, they're not going to let you go underground. Once it's overhead, it stays overhead till it reaches the structure. Um, so you might, but Central Hudson will clarify that with you. But that's been historically in the past. But you're going to be requiring more power than is currently on the site. Unless you're going all solar.
Not for dryer. Dino, you're working on that, right, Dino?
Yes, I am. Well, I already talked with Central Hudson to, uh, to get the three-phase. It's across the street to bring it in over. I need four hundred amps for the laundromat and apartments and four hundred amps for the back building is what I discussed. And I also am putting the new roof on and I'm talking with a solar company now for getting solar for the manufacturing facility. So as well as the laundromat.
Were you looking for a retail location for Jane's Ice Cream?
No.
No, I got a spot for you. Oh, well.
Oh, yeah? Okay. Well, you can tell me all about it next time I see you.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
No plans for Jane's to do a retail back there?
I'm sorry?
Any plans for Jane's to do retail?
No, I think what I'm going to do there, Mr. Homequist, because I'm a laundromat guy for twenty years, I'm just going to put in the front of the building here, some vending machines. And in the vending machines will be pint-sized of ice cream of all eighty-four flavors we serve. So people could go up to it with a quarters cash or a credit card and get their pint whenever they want, twenty-four, seven. Lit up what says Jane's Ice Cream in a vending machine format is what I'm thinking.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's very good.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, um, are there any other, any other business to come before the board?
I have one comment. I have now been, I have now been tasked with measuring the light levels of all the car dealerships in the town.
Okay.
God bless you. I'm blessed.
And you can guess why.
Yeah. Do we, uh, do we want to talk about that before, as a board, before we adjourn? The, the question of the light levels of Kia, I assume you're talking about?
It was presented to the supervisor that the light levels at three of the other being Bagnol, uh, Honda, and the new Chevy exceed the levels that we're requiring for Kia. So the only way to verify is to go and actually physically measure them.
Right.
Now, Warren, will you do that?
Who else would do it?
Pardon?
Who else would do it?
I didn't know if you were gonna sub it out.
No, I work for the town. I'm expendable.
Okay. A little bit more left on your plate.
At least it gets dark early now.
Exactly.
Yeah, at least it gets dark early. You won't be out too late doing it.
No, I shouldn't.
While you're at it, that Kingston Black and Masonry light on facing you on nine W when you're driving down the road is really bright. That can't be right either.
Every now and then they.
I've been saying about that for years.
Every now and then they set a temporary one up. I've had conversations. It hasn't been up for a week. They used to set this temporary, and it would shine right across the street into the park.
Oh, it was terrible. You couldn't even see driving down the road.
I'm surprised I haven't gotten complaints about the lights at the end of the driveway for the bowling alley.
Oh, yeah, those are bad too.
We have one shining right down.
It's just their angle. They just need to change the angle.
Okay. Add that to the list.
Okay. Hit the wrong buttons here. Alright, uh, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I make that motion.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second it.
Discussion. Alls in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? So, uh, I'm thinking next month of having a live meeting. What, what's everyone's thought?
It's really gonna depend on my situation. I mean, it's hard because the school I work at, I mean, I work for the school district, and there's something going on all the time with COVID, so I.
Yeah.
I don't know.
No, I understand that. That's why I was just gonna say, we can do a Zoom, uh, portion also.
I think it's just gonna get worse over the next month or two, so. You know, I was just saying. I don't know, the same.
I, yeah, okay. I mean, the, this format for me is a little difficult, but, you know.
Oh, I, I completely understand. It's just that I have to be, I have to make sure that I, my, for contact tracing, I have to make sure that I have very little contact, so.
Yeah. No, I get that. So.
I mean, if we can go in a big enough room where everybody's social distance, twelve feet apart, I mean, there's not many of us, it, it, it could be, could be doable, but that's something to consider.
Alright, well, um, I'll, I'll let you know. At this point, it, it, we'll stay with the Zoom meeting unless, uh.
It'll definitely matter too, how big the agenda. If, if the agenda is small, then it won't be long and there won't be a lot of people, so.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, good point. Okay, well, yeah, we'll see what, what the agenda looks like. And I'll certainly keep you informed.
Alright, perfect.
Sounds good.
Thanks to you all for your time and consideration. Greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, have a great Thanksgiving.
No problem and good luck. And yes, everyone stay safe and have a, thank, great.
Yup, everybody have a good Thanksgiving.
Absolutely. God bless, guys. Thank you.
And Larry, happy anniversary.
Thank you.
Happy anniversary, buddy.
Happy birthday.
Oh, thanks.
Happy birthday.
Thank you, guys.
Happy birthday.
Happy anniversary, Larry.
Thank you.
Alright, good night, everyone.
Good night, all.
Good night. Thank you all. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
I'm sorry I was late, guys. I couldn't find the link.
That's par for the course, Dave. That's par for the course.
Well, you made it. That's all that matters.
Yup, I hear you. Good night, all.
Okay, see ya. Bye.